We're going to call committee of the whole to order with apologies for the delay. I hope everybody's doing well this evening. Let's note that most members of the committee are present, save for President O'Malley, who we are excusing this evening, as well as Dr. Leiniger, Mayor George, Chief of Staff Story, and other members of the administration, and Tracy Nichols and other friends I'm sure will meet here momentarily. And so let's get started. Why don't we make a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting held last week to start? Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion passes. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Director Leiniger, or?
I can just keep it off.
Mayor George, let's do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, council members, members of the public. Thank you for being here tonight as we continue to discuss and lay out the proposal for the former hospital site, and we discuss Resolution 2022-14. We have some guests here tonight that are going to help us discuss the financials, the market comparison, and potential incentives. We have Brent Sobchak from Casto, Scott Simon from North Point Realty, and yeah, most of you all know Tracy Nichols from PMC, who's helped us through the entire span of this project and the prior project with the financials. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Leiniger to kick it off, and we will go from there. And we're welcome a dialogue from council and then eventually questions from the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Director Leiniger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Mayor George. So before I jump into this evening, on your screen, council, you have seen this, at the last meeting you asked that we put together some themes for the next three meetings that have been scheduled for the committee of the whole. So we, of course, are here this evening on April 11th to talk about the financials, the market comparison, and potential incentives. If you recall from our conversation on April 4th, at the introductory meeting to this, we started to ask a lot of questions, and there were starting to be asked about those various components. We thought that would be a good jumping off point because that's where a lot of the questions were focused, and really it's also what is driving a lot of the components of this project. As we then move into the next meeting on April 18th, and all these are scheduled for 6:00 PM in this room, we'll talk about the various project components, from the residential through the Curtis block and down through the parking garage. On April 25th, we'll continue any of those loose items that we didn't get through on the 18th. We'll have Roundstone, members of Roundstone here with us to talk about their portion of the project, and we'll also have, we'll talk about the term sheet and any other open items. We'll have representatives from Brooklyn Eckler here at that April 25th meeting as well, if there's any legal questions pertaining to the term sheet. So that's the general path forward as we move forward here this evening. And certainly, if there's anything we need to follow up with you from questions, things that we just don't have answers to here tonight, we'll plug that in along the way. So with that, the topic again tonight is the, are the financials, the market comparison, and the potential incentives. As I shared with you last week, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of analysis that has really gotten us to this point. Brent Sobchak, president with Casto, is here this evening to start to walk us through that. Sorry, I don't know where that went. Start to walk us through that and really add a little bit more context to some of those discussions that we've had to this point. If you recall, I shared with you the changes we were dealing with from 2017 to the pivot to Casto that occurred in late 2020, early 2021, which the site's obviously very different with the former hospital now being demolished, the environmental conditions that we encountered along the way. We are now still in the midst of a pandemic that's brought on its own host of issues, most recently in record inflation and rising interest rates, that even as we're sitting here having conversations about the project are adding, unfortunately, lots of dollars to the cost to construct that project. Forces be under control, but still issues that we have to figure out how to contend with. And so with that, I wanted to have, we're going to have Brent start to walk you through some of that discussion. I suspect from those topic areas that I gave you, we're going to meander into some of those just naturally. It's okay, we expect that, but we do want to try to stay focused in on where we are with the financials and the bigger picture. And then we'll reserve some time in future meetings for those detailed discussions. So with that, Brent.
Good evening, everyone. Brent Sobchak with Casto. Thank you for having us here tonight to kind of review the financials. Thank you, Mayor and Sean. I think what I'd like to do before getting into the financials is give a little bit of background as to kind of how we got here with this financial presentation, because I think a lot of the work that we've done over the last year or so with the advisory panel and staff really helped inform kind of where we're at today. So kind of taking that step back, when we started taking another look at this site roughly about a year ago, we started probably with the most dense option that we've entertained. That option contained, I think, a 10-story building that contained an office and hotel, a 12-story residential, a five and a six-story residential, along with a four-level parking garage, of which two levels were underground. We then took that version to our contractor, priced it, and put it into our financial model, and met with Sean and the advisory panel, and we actually went in and said, "This just doesn't work for us, and we don't think it makes sense for you at the city level, given the kind of gap of value relative to cost," and what we'd have to close that gap with, with financial incentives, just they didn't exist. So we took a step back, and we then evaluated the plan a little further. We shifted and kind of reduced density to try to get out of some of that high-rise building type, which at that time, you know, that building type involved a lot of concrete and steel, so going to a lower-density, mid-rise project that transitions to a different building type, so kind of light gauge metal, which the hope was that would bring the costs down enough that we could close that gap. So again, went through the same exercise. That one involved a four-story office building, a four-story residential, a six-story residential, an eight-story residential, and a seven-story residential. And also, in between that time period, we had consulted with some of our hotel partners that we've partnered with in the past, primarily Rockbridge Capital out of Columbus. They're one of the nation's largest hotel operators. And essentially, the feedback we got on the hotel was the basis that they would need to come in to operate, given where market rents were, really wasn't achievable from our standpoint. We do feel that a hotel would be a dynamic use on a project like this, but unfortunately, the market's just not allowing it today. So we pulled that hotel out of that version, went through the same exercise of putting it to the market and pricing it. That also, that second version, still maintained the two levels, underground and two above. What we did transition from that first to second was the Curtis block was freestanding, and in the second, we looked at doing a facade preservation of the Detroit Avenue facade. And we can get into the Curtis block later from a cost standpoint, but ultimately, that same version came back with similar results. While the cost came down and the gap got smaller, it was still kind of too large to overcome from the collective groups. So we took a step back, and we started to analyze each component of the uses, and really wanted to try to figure out what was driving this gap and what was kind of the main forces creating it. So we went and took each component and kind of separated them out, and probably to no surprise, the garage was the most difficult one. It was the largest gap relative to value and revenues, and I think Tracy can probably attest to that later. Parking garages in almost anywhere in Ohio, in mixed-use projects, that's the biggest piece of puzzle to try to solve because they just don't make sense. The next layer that was probably the most upside-down was the office component, and that was really where market rents are relative to the cost. It didn't make sense. What was able to transpire in that time period was Roundstone coming to the table, and we'll go into Roundstone later, but essentially, Roundstone wanted to own their own building, and Sean and his team has worked on putting together a package for them. We've put together a package that can kind of accomplish them owning their floors, which are in building A here on the screen, and it's floors two, three, and four, by which we would sell them those floors at the cost of those floors. So all of that exercise kind of got us to, okay, the office was upside-down, the garage is upside-down. How do we create a more efficient garage? Let's start there. So what we've done, we've kind of pulled it above ground, so we've taken all that expense that was being incurred with being below ground and made it more efficient by having it above ground. The office component kind of solved itself with the Roundstone introduction. The retail component is essentially kind of a break-even factor, but it's also something we think is critical and needed on a project of this scale. The residential makes sense. Unfortunately, it's just not large enough to overcome some of the components of the garage and everything that needs to go into the site, and all the public components that we're trying to incorporate as well. So with that, that kind of gives you a short recap of about a year and a half in about five minutes, but that helped really inform to where we're at today and what these numbers I'm about to walk through. Sean, if you can pull that up. So at the, kind of the top box here, sticking with the residential, we have 204 units. One question that always gets asked are, what are the average rents? And what is the rent per square foot? So you can see there 1,850 and 215 a square foot. One thing to point out, you know, that's just rent, that doesn't include other costs that are incurred by the tenant, from parking to trash to pet fees to utility chargeback. So when calculating our rents and kind of looking at the market, we always want to look at a pure rent number, so we can make sure the prospective renters can absorb that. Then moving down to the retail, I've titled the building Roundstone and Curtis, just so people can have their bearings on the site plan. This can be restaurant, this can be office. These users can be flexible, it can be fitness. What we've programmed is $30 a square foot. While that is probably well above market rents in Lakewood, we think for a project of this scale, and we've provided similar examples of that to the advisory committee, we think this is an achievable rent. We also think a project like this, that's what the market should command. Moving down to the garage, this is always the biggest exercise of trying to solve. And this, to me, just kind of outlines who the users are in the garage. We have 540 spaces. The Roundstone transaction, Roundstone would require 240 spaces. The Cleveland Clinic agreement, they are obligated to have 75 spaces. So that then puts us on the residential side at 140 spaces for the 204 units. But one thing to point out, the Roundstone and Cleveland Clinic spaces become available to the public after 6:00 PM on the weekdays and available on the weekend. So then the last remaining component is 85 spaces that's kind of set aside for public in those daytime hours that Roundstone and the clinic are using the spaces, and also that ground floor commercial that we pointed out. So then, total project cost, this is $81.8 million. This is net of the Roundstone office space, since that is kind of a sale transaction out of the project cost. We then, based on our experience and talking to some of our lending partners, what do we think we could borrow on a project of this size? And that came in at almost $50 million. So then, the next step for us was trying to figure out what the maximum equity we would be willing to put in to achieve kind of a minimum return threshold. So our threshold is a 12% return on equity, based on this $14.5 million. And as Sean pointed out, there's assumption and risk with this, given the volatility in the interest rate market. So that return on equity is based on, once this project's built leased, and three years from now, we go to refinance the whole thing, and we put on long-term debt, what interest rate assumption do we want to use in three years from now? So right now, we're assuming 5%. And so that's how that 12% is calculated. So that's kind of part of the risk-reward. If that rate goes to six, then our returns go down. If that rate stays below five, then there's a little more return in the cards for us. But that's kind of how we were able to, and kind of how we worked through all the previous versions with the advisory panel to kind of put a consistent threshold in place, which ultimately got us to a gap of $17.8 million. So that obviously is a big number from my standpoint and kind of the world we live in. Unfortunately, that's kind of the norm and the reality right now, and then the objective is how do you solve for that? And there's plenty of tools, and I know Tracy can weigh in on that, but from our standpoint, there's transformational mixed-use tax credits, there's capital lease programs, there's grants, there's low-interest debt with different programs that are out there with the state. There's TIF revenues, and those TIF revenues can be monetized, there's many ways to structure that, but from our standpoint, this gap got to a point where we felt it could be closed, and it was a point to where we were willing to put time and money to continue to take this to the next step. Kind of a short summary, but hopefully that informed and happy to answer questions and walk through the different components.
Sure. Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate the sort of real run-through of how we got to this point, complete with kind of the hopes and dreams to start, and how we moved from there. Are there any other components you want to make sure you say to us before we move to questions?
I think probably more of a dialogue and question will probably is the next step for me.
Sure, sure. Well, again, we appreciate the presentation. I hope that we could maybe get a copy of this presentation for our own information. And then, the first question I have relates actually to parking spaces, of all things. We've had the Family Health Center there for a few years now. 75 spaces is maybe a lot, I don't know, in the scheme of things. And I know that's something that's previously agreed upon, but I don't know to what extent there's some flexibility there, should they perhaps not need the spaces they thought they would need at the outset?
So, Councilman, to your point, yes, we are contractually obligated to provide 75 spaces. It doesn't prohibit us from going and having conversations with the clinic as this project begins to move forward and other things start to take shape, to go and discuss with them the need for the 75 spaces, perhaps alternatives to how we can provide those in other forms or other locations. The current agreement does provide some latitude to that, but the way it's written, it basically has to be adjacent to the site. There's nothing really adjacent to the site where we can provide that, so it would require a re-opener with the agreement, but something we have not taken off the table.
Sure. And have there been any like preliminary conversations with the clinic about, do they really need them, you know, just those sorts of things?
We have not had any conversations with them yet until we get a little bit farther along in our process and know that we have a project to move forward and continue those conversations.
Very good. Okay. I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Councilwoman Buller. Councilwoman Keppl had a question, but thank you to North Point Realty and Casto and the administration for getting us to the point where we're looking at a concrete proposal to begin the discussion. I know that we've had some informal chance to meet each other and even see a property that Casto did a very fine job of in Ohio City, in Cleveland, about a year ago. You do find work, and we're glad that you've hung in there with the ups and downs of the market. Nobody could have predicted all of that. So we appreciate that and look forward to kind of working through the many layers of this project, and the financials, the design, the site plan, the mix, the everything, there's a lot here. And, Mr. Chair, I don't know, do we have time tonight? If the public has any comments or questions that they want to ask, we'll have the opportunity for the public, because ultimately, we're working for the public. We're all here in the spirit of maximizing the opportunity of this publicly-owned, six-acre parcel. And it occurs to me, we have one of these in Lakewood, period. Cleveland has many large parcels, and they're in a different footing where they would want to get development rolling in a wave that gets more and more momentum. We want that same ripple effect. We want this to be an engine to, I think, spur reinvestment in the downtown and throughout our community, and our downtown does need some reinvestment because we've got some aging in office. But this is our one shot. It's our only shot for a six-acre parcel, and it's our only shot in our downtown, probably for 50 years or longer. So I think a lot of us have pretty high hopes and expectations for what we can accomplish. So I won't try to dive into every facet. I'll have to do a lot of kind of in writing with the team by email. But for tonight, I guess I'd like to ask this from the financial perspective. Is this a fully baked cake? Because I think you've done a clear job of saying that financials are hard, there's a ceiling on the price, the rents, there's a squeeze with the interest rates and the construction materials and the labor, and therefore, we're trying to thread this needle. You've got a manna from heaven in the form of Roundstone, although a very, very, very big parking garage. And I have the same question as my colleague here about, boy, does the clinic maybe behind North Point Realty there? There's a big garage that already is built, maybe they could make some use of those spots. But there's, you know, there's conversations in front of us about the public square, the cladding of the parking garage. Are those budgeted to be kind of gold-to-platinum level quality that you've heard me wax poetic about more than once? Because I guess what I'm hearing right now is we're pretty constricted by the financials, which would mean, from your perspective, or the implication I'm getting is there's not a lot of room for change on this plan. Or tell me if I'm wrong, because I know also that the residential property, or the residential buildings you've called out are really just massing without detail or features, and it's probably a lot of work in front of us to add character to the whole project and give it feel and design and all the rest.
I would say this is at a conceptual level. We totally recognize that the process hasn't started, and the input on the plan and the design is still to come. But given the exercises that we were kind of tasked to go through, we assumed the highest level finishes that we could in these numbers. And so it's been kind of a give-and-take on the plan as you go from a 12-story concrete building down to an eight-story light gauge to a podium building with wood frame construction on top, and then we're assuming the same high-quality windows, exterior finishes and materials and interior. So most of that stays the same, but we also recognize that there's going to be a give-and-take through the process. But to your point, we're also constrained with escalating prices, escalating interest rates, and from my standpoint, we're just being open book and kind of, this is what it is today, based on a conceptual plan.
And is there any play between the uses? So office is only so large in the initial proposal. You've got a majority of residential rental, by the way, and only a tiny bit of ownership, which we should call out for a future conversation. Could there be a scenario in which Casto sees and North Point Realty sees, hey, we'd want to shift between those uses, use categories?
I think there's probably a little more wiggle room to add some for-sale component, and we're looking at, trying to study what can be done on that south end of the site. I think the office component is, would be a struggle to add from a market standpoint to then the domino effect of additional parking required. And if you look at, you know, the Roundstone requirement relative, 240 spaces out of the 540, if we were to add additional, that's only going to add to the parking spaces we have to build, which is only going to add to that gap, which then makes it that more challenging. Ideally, I think, you know, 204 multifamily is, we'd like to add to that, and I think we're kind of studying some different ways to potentially do that. But I think-
So maybe more residential?
Maybe more residential. I don't see us being able to add more retail, given the footprints and the plaza and kind of how we're trying to program that.
Okay. Thanks. I appreciate that opening discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Keppl.
Thank you, and thanks for being here tonight. I have a few questions. Does the gap include, does that take into account the community reinvestment area program, the 15-year tax abatement for affordable housing?
That does.
Okay.
And it also factors in the affordable component and the housing revenue.
So that would be potentially an additional city investment on top of the 15-year tax abatement? Right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, do we know what the cost, it's mentioned in here about bringing the site to grade, and maybe this is a question for Director Leiniger, but what the cost of bringing the site to grade would be, and is that the city's responsibility?
So in the term sheet, there is discussion about some current activities that we had talked about as actually part of our budget process, involving bringing that site up to grade. And the reason why we're advancing that sooner than later is because we have, at the bottom of those excavation sites, there are actually pumps that are intended there to grab the stormwater that runs off of the site into the bottom of those, in the bottom of those sites, and pump it into our sanitary sewer. What's happening right now is that we aren't just grabbing the rainwater, we're actually getting groundwater that's coming up through the bottom of the mud mat that's at the bottom of the site. That, if you recall from our previous conversations, that groundwater has contamination in it from the dry cleaning chemicals, and we need to stop that from happening. Yes, we're putting it into the treatment plant, it's being treated as it goes to the treatment facility, and so we're not releasing it, and it's being taken care of, but we don't want to continue to do that. And so we're working with Casto now on grading plans on how we can accomplish that. At the time the term sheet was drafted, we talked about bringing the entire site up to essentially street level. As we've advanced our conversation, that's probably not necessary, and actually might be detrimental to create a lot of extra work for Casto. So we're talking about some type of much less intrusive plan that may only lift the bottom of the excavation sites a few feet. The original cost that we had set aside for that, that we budgeted, was around $1.5 million. It's really related to the amount of soil, clay that we're going to have to buy, the trucking costs associated with it. It's really related to the amount of soil clay that we're going to have to buy, the trucking costs associated with it. This modified plan will be less than that. I don't have a delta factor on what that difference would be, but it'll be, it'll be something less than the 1.5 million that we had originally budgeted.
If I can follow up. So that 1.5 million that was budgeted is not, is that included in this or that is separate?
That's completely separate. So that's, that's being held separate prior to any type of transfer or development agreement. That work will happen in advance of any type of agreement, formal agreement with Casto by way of a development agreement.
I see. So the consulting is just making sure that we're not doing anything that's detrimental to, right, got it. Okay. And then if I could ask one more quickly. So I, I noticed most of the residential is one to two bedroom. And I understand that that's probably most what the market wants for the type of housing you're doing. But you know, as we talk about affordable housing here in Lakewood, I know we really are, a lot of our families are struggling with affordable housing. And particularly we had a meeting with the school system talking about a lot of our families having to leave and leave their school system. So I would love to see or hear about if there's a possibility of doing three bedroom or, or more.
Yeah, I, I think having some three bedroom mix is something we're going to look into. So.
Thank you, Councilmember Keppl. One quick comment I have and perhaps a question to follow that up. I guess I want to acknowledge the, and understand perhaps the, the market we're in as far as office space goes and how challenging that seems to be regionally, perhaps nationally. And how it really is a positive to have Roundstone willing to invest in, in this project in, in such a way. With that comes what to me, again, as a layman, is a unique setup to have them having such ownership over a project like this. And I'm, I guess I'm curious to hear from, from everybody here, what, what that looks like in five years, 10 years as things get refinanced. And you know, perhaps other challenges come about, worst case scenario, best case scenario, things like that, as far as having such a unique ownership stake in a project like this.
Yeah. So that's a good question. And that's a, that would be a critical component for us. So the way it's contemplated right now is it's a condo sale. So they would essentially own within their, their four walls. We, as owner of the remainder, would control the exterior, control the site. So all of the public facing components would be kind of under our control. So that was a, a critical component for us and generally why we structured it as a condo. Cause we wanted also to maintain control of that ground floor, which would have commercial space, whether that's a restaurant or whatever. How that interacts with the parking garage and the public space. From our standpoint, all needs to be under one controlling entity. What happens within their space above and how they design that, that's on them. So long as we can control that exterior design as well, which is, is how it's structured. So they would own that. Their plan is to grow into that space. I think they're currently at 19,018 and they have plans to grow into the 60. We have not discussed any first rate of repurchase if they were to try to sell it. But I think that's something that, once we get to that stage, that, that's something we'd want to have that right. I'll let Scott weigh in on, on the market office. I know he's got some assets here in town as well. But from our standpoint, it's, it's been a challenge irregardless of, of COVID. Office rents generally kind of stay the same and costs are going like this. So that model doesn't usually work too well.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Simon with North Point. I think the answer is it's a big question mark. There was an article in the New York Times today about the future of office space in Manhattan, based on the hybrid nature of, of office use. So, you know, I was lucky enough to be involved in the first discussion with Roundstone representing the project. And, you know, sometimes we talk about a perfect storm. This was the opposite of a perfect storm. It was a, it is a growing entity, well led by terrific, smart people. Lakewood based and wants to remain in Lakewood. And so those conversations advanced very quickly, even though my first meeting with them was a little, almost a year ago. Once we got down to Brass Tacks and they saw the site, they saw the signage opportunities. And frankly, they saw the community involvement piece. Are there a lot of Roundstones out there? Absolutely not. I think that we, that we have a wonderful opportunity and the city has a wonderful opportunity having them. And as Brent mentioned, it, it really was a, a key that unlocked a part of this site because the office piece was a big challenge pro forma wise. So I, I think at this stage, we're looking at it as a really important achievement. I know that they're excited about it and I'm sure that you'll hear from them. And the economic discussions have been vigorous and, and I think we're all, we're all at a place of agreement, at least in terms of a term sheet area that we can move forward. As it relates to office space, I, you know, I don't know that we're going to see tremendous growth in rents. I think that the supply will continue to increase. We do own property. We've developed property. We're in the office building business. And we've seen not drastic shifts, but we have seen things go sideways. And companies that we thought that we were going to expand and take more space are not, they're holding off. Some consolidations that we weren't expecting. And so I think as we look into the future, as I mentioned at the beginning, I think it's, it's a bit of a question mark. What I am confident in personally is the relationship with Roundstone related to this project. And I think that this is a real opportunity for the city to keep a major employer and a growing employer and allowing, you know, a key part of this site to move forward.
So for the benefit of, of everybody in the room and people watching online perhaps, Roundstone will occupy blank on day one and they will occupy, and they will hold ownership over blank thereafter?
They will occupy floors three and four, day one, and hold ownership over floor two with expansion plans into floor two.
And in the interim of those expansion plans, will they be sub leasing or whatever you, whatever the terminology is?
That is their plan today. Timing and their, relative to their growth, that may evolve.
And I know we can't predict the future fully, but in year five, should, should Casto choose to sell or back out? What have you, what happens to Roundstone? How does that negotiation work, et cetera?
Roundstone would still control their parking spaces. They, they'd still own their office floors. They'd be part of the overall mixed use development. Ultimately some mechanism, whether that is a declaration or special assessment or some other vehicles placed on the, the development to kind of control its standards and maintenance and security and so on. They would still be obligated, the next user would be obligated or owner would be obligated to that.
Any other questions here on those questions or from my colleagues?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just to build off of Brent's point regarding the, those standards. That's something that we do contemplate in the term sheet as far as the standards of care for the garage, for the community plaza and the overall development. And so as, as this advances, we will be looking at maintenance plans. We will be talking about operational revenues to maintain and operate these facilities as they move forward. So that whatever happens in the future, all of the, the hard work that we put forward that Casto and North Point have put forward survives into the future. So that, that's something that we're considering as we, as we advance this path forward too.
I want to make sure I get to some comments from my colleagues as well as acknowledging that we have about 12 minutes left in our stated time for, for this meeting. I anticipate going a little long, of course, but I want to make sure we discuss incentives because that was part of what we wanted to discuss tonight as well.
Yeah, through the chair, and this, this kind of gets to that point. So on the, the bottom line of this financial summary, Councilperson Keppl raised the, the gap, right? 18 million dollar gap. So, so from my understanding, that does not include the CRA. So is that basically what the TIF ask is? Is that what we're to believe or, or no?
So we've looked at this with the develop, I'm Tracy Nichols. I'm with project management consultants. I'm a consultant with the city of Lakewood. I do not work for the developers. So we have worked with the developer on this and we've looked at the incentives that they are considering and evaluated their value to the project. So in filling their gap, they've proposed a TIF. They've proposed looking at the port sales tax relief, which we think would be applicable here. Some low interest financing and some state funding as well. So we've looked at all of those funding sources and determined that this gap could be filled on today. We could go out and get these funding sources and be able to fill the gap to be able to move forward. And that would include a TIF to the city of Lakewood. And we also looked at perhaps a, one small grant that would help offset a portion of the cost. But we do believe that we could close this gap with those incentives.
And, Ms. Chair, another point, and I, this is probably more for Tracy. You know, the 5% kind of, you know, plugging in the number on the interest rate. I don't follow these things super closely, but I understand that there's some volatility there. Interest rates have historically been low, but that's to say in the eighties, they were in 19, 20%, right? So is there a way to craft a development agreement that, you know, if the rate is three, right, or two and a half, when they refi, right? Can the city recapture some of those funds and maybe take them off the TIF or something like that?
Well, I mean, you can write lots of things into your development agreement. It's whether or not a developer would actually agree to work with you. I would say that in my experience, once we issue a TIF, I've always looked at a TIF as a way to help reinvestment into the property to keep it up. If you look into the city of Cleveland, for example, in downtown Cleveland, over the many, many years, owners of those properties had a tendency to take money out of the property after a certain period of time. A TIF, it forces a developer to put money back into the property to always make sure that it's up to snuff for that full time period. And I think there's some benefit to that from an overall perspective as a, a community looks at a partnership with a developer. And especially in a project like this that is such an important piece of your downtown, that not only helps anchor and support downtown, but can also attract additional investment, whether large or small. And so that would be the way that I would look at it, but you can craft a development agreement to say a lot of different things. It's just whether or not a developer is going to look at, well, if my interest rate goes down, do some of my other costs go up? And right now we're looking at a lot of volatility, not just on interest rate, but we also have volatility of the cost of actual construction materials and beyond that availability. So supply chain has become an issue. And while you say, well, that's just, we're waiting on materials. Well, when you wait on materials, it, it draws your timeframe to complete a project gets extended. And when that happens, it costs you more money. You're carrying your construction loan for a longer period of time. You have all these other issues that are coming up that we can't really predict at this point. I mean, five years ago, we could have told you, well, it's going to take you this long to build the project and it'll cost you this much. We can't do that. And until you order your appliances, for example, you don't know when they're going to come in and you don't know what they're necessarily going to cost. And you're not really ordering them and putting them in a warehouse on your first day. So there's a lot of factors. So I would just caution the council to consider those as we go forward. And, and also indicate that we started this process in 2018 with a developer who had a lot of lofty ideas, but could never make it work in a good climate. And now we're looking at, okay, what can we make work that delivers kind of what the, the city has asked for in regards to some of the component parts? And, and get it, and actually get it done and moving forward. And, and that's going to be done fairly quickly because we really don't know what the future will bring. So.
Ms. Chair, the question, so I, and I understand the conversation about, you know, going from high, right? Cement, superstructure buildings to kind of more, you know, concrete with wood frame above it. My, my question is with, with that style of building, you know, assuming we have the four story office and I think it's a five or six story. Is that the limit to that construction style or can you go even higher?
That, that is the limit. It's five over, over one or just five story stick frame construction. So the, the office building is a steel construction type.
So if, if you went higher on the office building, it would turn to steel?
No, that, that is in that building. But the other buildings would convert to a different building type, construction type.
Okay. And the other thing, and I'm, I'm interested, you know, the, the slide and I, it looks like it's coming in a future presentation. So, you know, I'll defer some of those questions, but you know, the market study we did, as everyone has indicated, right? Was, was pre-COVID, was pre what we're going through now. We're still using those benchmarks though roughly to think about square footages of, of office, retail. Seems to be we've overshot, you know, the retail a little bit. We've undershot the office and we've, we've, we're kind of on the low end of the, the residential. So I'm, I'm curious if the administration has considered, you know, re engaging Todd Poole out of Philadelphia, who I think did the original study to, to update some of those numbers, or is that something we haven't done?
So to your question, first of all, have we, have we looked at reopening these numbers? No, we have not considered revaluing the study. Given the, we did have conversation about it, but given the market that we're in, it's, as Tracy has noted, it's, it's a volatile market. We don't know which direction, particularly the office market is going right now. And Tracy and, and Scott can probably speak better to this than I can. There, there is but for Roundstone, there just aren't office deals that are happening out there. And so I did share this slide as part of the presentation last week. And this, this, this compares what's being proposed in this proposal back to the 2017 market study. In that 2017 market study, prior to everything that we're dealing with today, there was a perceived demand of about 74,000 square feet of office space. That was not necessarily new office space construction in the city of Lakewood or within a 15 mile, 15 minute drive of, of, of this site. There was a lot of commentary in that study that said that most, if not all of that 74,000 square feet of demand could be met with existing vacancies that are within that 15 mile PMA. The same, for the retail, yes, it, we are slightly overshooting it. And I have a comparison, as was requested, for the other, the other proposals. But that retail component was 20,000. Most of that was geared towards specialty food services, restaurants, if you will. A little bit on a specialty grocery. And then on the residential side, this tried to pinpoint down to this actual site around our downtown, I should say generally. And found that there's a demand somewhere between 116 and 348 units. That was before we considered 260 units that Solov, I'm sorry, 280 units that Solov is, is developing. So with, if you factor in the, the 280 units that, that Solov is going to be developing, we're, we're, we're well above the market demand that we have saw in, in 2017. And that also doesn't consider a lot of the other projects that have now come to fruition in that 15 minute area. So since I'm talking, I'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So you'd asked for a comparison, and I'm sorry, this got really small for some reason. You'd asked for a comparison of the previous development. This is the original Casto proposal from 2017, North Point Realty proposal from 2017. And then the green bar is what's being proposed as part of the, the current application in front of you. The red lines, of course, this is, it got a little ghosted out so you could see through them, but these are the market slides, or market items that you saw on the previous slide. So the previous developer was way overshooting the market demand on office, way overshooting the market demand on retail and commercial. And similarly on, on hotel. So the comment, we haven't talked about this, but the commentary in the, in the 2017 study as it related to hotel, found that there were, there were 300, 3,200 rooms. as it related to a hotel, found that there were 3,200 rooms within our 15-mile area. Because we have downtown, we also have some projects south of here. There's another almost 400,000 square feet of banquet event space within that same area. There was a potential, so there really wasn't a demand for a hotel in the city of Lakewood. Any demand that would be in the city may be because of overflow that's coming out of downtown or coming out of some other areas. But even then, there was some commentary in there that any hotel use, particularly on this site, because it doesn't have I-90 exposure, it doesn't have, it's not frontage on any other major highway. It's not central to casinos and health marts that were contemplated back then. It was really going to struggle without significant science, without significant marketing to make it work. We all think that it would be, we all think that it would be successful, but the market doesn't, the market side just doesn't bear that out. We all think that we, there would be a tremendous amount of need for office in our community, but really the facts don't bear that out. And so that's what this slide is trying to pull together as we think about all the different proposals that you've seen over the years. And the residential, I didn't talk to the residential, but you can see those numbers on this slide as well. So this was one of the open items that you had, but this is really where the market analysis leads us to. If we were, if we were able to do an analysis on office, I don't think it would be more favorable than what it's showing here. It would probably be less favorable. Right now, I think it's comfortable to say that there's over 50,000 square feet of office space vacant today in the city of Lakewood. So but for Roundstone, being on this site, wanting to own and occupy their building, the lease rates and other things just wouldn't make sense for us. But certainly don't want to take anything from Tracy or Scott either.
Okay. I'm sensing a couple of questions from my colleagues and then we'll move on to some incentive talk and certainly public comment as well. I imagine we have at least a couple signed up to comment. Councilman Schachner?
Thank you.
And then Councilman Rader, do you have?
I know there's a for-sale type units contemplated, for-sale residential contemplated. If, we didn't have that at all, how many more residential unit? Have you thought, have you planned that out or see how many you could add if you didn't have the for-sale residential?
I don't think we've looked at that down there. I think from my quick reaction there, I don't really like that idea, given that there's the existing single-family down there. I kind of like that kind of transition from the three-story down. But that's something we could evaluate. I think we're also studying if we were to do some townhouse units there that were in the for-sale, what could that yield? But we have not looked at that.
In terms of, I know there's been, like condos have kind of disappeared since the great recession. Is there any contemplation of that being a possibility? Did the market bear it out here?
I think that potential evolution of that south side of the site could incorporate some condos, but from a larger scale, we would be hesitant to do that from our standpoint.
Thank you. Councilman Rader?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for coming out. I really appreciate, first off, the format of this and being able to see the finances upfront before we get to the development side of it is a breath of fresh air. I think we didn't approach it this way last time, so I really appreciate you and understanding where the gaps are. And now that we're getting a little bit deeper into that, that's great. Were we planning on getting into, and something I'd like to know at some point, Curtis Block, how that decision was made, where the dollars and cents are? Because you did mention that at one point it was a separate building. Somehow it became a facade save. What were the dollars, what are the numbers there and how did we get to this point?
Yeah.
And I do want to make it clear, we do intend to talk Curtis Block specifically over the next two meetings.
I just want to make sure it's included. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So in this current plan, and let me start by, we've done, at, I and my organization, we've done four historic renovation projects. It's something that we're kind of passionate about. We enjoy doing it. And that's where we started here. So in that kind of first, most dense plan that I talked about, it was a full save. That save is roughly $6 to $7 million. And we've done numerous historic tax credit projects in the past. So we're familiar with that process. We understand the state application and receiving those credits. The challenge with that was twofold. That building, it has three structural demising walls that really breaks up the ground floor into three smaller spaces, roughly 2,000 to 2,500 square feet. So from a market standpoint, we're not going to get the revenue and rents in that space. And going through the historic process, many of those sides of that building do not have natural light. So not only do you have these small spaces, you also don't have good space. So if we were to pull this building back, we'd lose that commercial space and that dynamic commercial space that's on Detroit that can kind of spill out into the plaza. Then everything that's above it on floors two through six, we would lose those residential units. So we'd lose about 24 units. Then the kind of next iteration is, well, why don't you just add another floor to that building? Well, if we do that, we kick up into another building type. So then we're into light gauge steel. So we get back into the inefficient construction type for 12 more units on that floor. So it's kind of this domino effect. Then when you looked at the facade save, so we go from, call it $7 million on the high for the full building, which reduces your revenues, reduces your unit counts. The facade saves about $2 million. We're keeping the Detroit facade. And that's what we have contemplated here. Then down to the full-scale demolition, you're in that couple hundred thousand dollar range. So, you know, we, we think this is the most economically viable option, but we also understand the passion and the reasoning for preserving buildings. So just recognizing that's in addition to kind of the issue we're trying to solve. I think we've also contemplated, you know, is there a way that we're making a donation to a preservation fund that helps preserve other buildings in Lakewood? Is there, is there a way to reuse some of the bricks on the building in the plaza and try to pay homage to the Curtis Block? So from a pure cost standpoint, I think that hopefully addresses your question.
And again, we will, I appreciate the question, Councilman Rader, and we'll be sure to be discussing the Curtis Block and other pieces, parts of the project moving forward. I do want to make sure that we have some time to talk incentives as well as allow for some public comment. And do we know how many are signed up?
Sean, can you zoom in on the small print here? I just want to see the counts for?
Actually, not, I'm not the Wizard of Oz tonight.
Whoever's running the?
It's me.
Pretty picture. I just want to see the, the unit counts in the big commercial, excuse me, the residential.
And you should have this exhibit as part of your council packet from last week that you should be able to zoom in on in the PDF.
Well, it's the, our Zoom is blurry, but.
Alternatively, there's a high-res, there's a high-res version on the website too.
Yes. And, and I'm sorry, Casto was saying if you'd lose 24 units on building one, is your concern about a Curtis Block conserved? We'll have more conversation on that. And then.
And that's an approximate.
So it'd be 24 units plus then the, a portion of, a large, a majority of the commercial space, 12,000 square feet, is it?
Yeah, that's a 17 gross.
I ask a question while Councilman Block's reading.
Please.
I just wanted to follow up. I don't know where I got this idea, maybe, I don't know. But I see on here, so the single-family lots would obviously be the for-sale or be for-sale. But were there other for-sale residential? No, those would be the only.
Just the two. Yes.
Very good. So with that, can we, can we talk incentives?
Absolutely. So maybe I can start with the conversation about incentives to go to some comparative tables that I was asked to put together. I'm still waiting on some information for the Van Aken project in Shaker Heights, unless anybody at the table happens to know that off the top of their head. So I put together just a quick summary of the different uses for our downtown Lakewood project, the top of the hill project, which is a project in Cleveland Heights. The Cedar Lee Meadowbrook is another project that's taking place in Cleveland Heights. It's a little bit farther behind. They don't have all their approvals in place. But then also Van Aken Phase One. There's another phase that's being contemplated in Shaker Heights right now that has to deal with a residential tower. And so that does not include any of that conversation. So you can kind of see the comparison here of the different, different projects. Most notably, the, none of them except for Van Aken include an office component, which as Brendan alluded to, is a main driver for parking. They are largely, at least the two Cleveland Heights projects are largely residential, residentially programs. And they are providing a large number of parking spaces to support more than a one-to-one ratio on their, on the residential parking compared to 540 here for the downtown Lakewood site. Incentives, Tracy had mentioned some of the things that have been in discussion at this point. We still have a lot of details to figure out with the, with the TIF, the term, the percent, but most likely we're talking a 30-year, 100% TIF. Whether or not the schools are involved, that is to be determined. And a lot of the other things that we've talked about, whether it's the private financing programs that are available to Casto and North Point, or if we're able to receive any other funds through other sources, such as the state of Ohio, through vibrant communities or T-Mud. For the projects that are in Cleveland Heights, they did have a 30-year TIF in both of them. They did have the schools involved. And so when I say schools 25%, that means the schools are receiving 25% of what they would otherwise receive. So the schools has made 75% of what they would have received in tax funding. They have pledged that back into the project. And how they have pledged that back into the project, which is very interesting, is that the city actually issued debt to help support the project. City of Lakewood, we have not, whenever we've done a TIF, we have, the city has not taken on any debt. That is always, we've made the TIF available as a tool for the developer and the developer takes on all of the risk associated with monetizing the TIF. The land, we are still, that's still part of an open negotiation.
Can I interject on that point? Do we have a recent appraisal for the land value? I think we should do that.
No, we do not have a recent, I don't, I don't know what the age of the last appraisal was.
I mean, I know that was a very hot contentious topic for years here. The previous administration supposedly was giving away the land for a dollar the whole time. Of course, it's an investment, it's a co-investment, but we should know, of course, not a dollar. It's whatever the full value of the, of the property is under current market conditions. I think it would be helpful to know.
Sure. And to the point, that point, Cleveland Heights, they were making a land, they were contributing the land to the project. They had a little bit of a creative way to do that through a land lease. And then you can see some of the other funds. The city did put in funds in the Cleveland, in the Cleveland Heights project. They're actually also transferring the city-owned garage to the developer after they pay off some debt, after the developer pays off some debt on behalf of them. So round number, that's kind of where we are on the incentive side. And we'll come back to this real quick, just to kind of knock off some of the other questions. I've already shared a slide that outlines the market comparison of the market study versus, this proposal versus the previous developer. I think they gave up with the heat. It's all right.
Trying to sweat everybody out of here.
That's what we're, that's our goal. There was a question about what type of jobs and income tax did the hospital generate? These are the numbers as they, they really kind of, they're what may have been a peak. But as they dwind, as they wound down operations from 2013 through 2017 and the income tax that was generated across both of those. And this is our income tax at opening day. And so there's a lot of growth that's going to happen with Roundstone. We don't contemplate that, that growth at this point. I think there's a, there's a little bit because it's three years out projected. But $620,000 in income tax is what we, we project between the retail, commercial, office and then the residential as well. And a lot of this is schematic. Then the 90 jobs will come to light once we have some programming done on who those potential tenants might be. I think in this case, we use three jobs per thousand square feet within, because most retail jobs are lower paying with lower, lower income rate. So with that, I'll come back up to this slide. But this is the rough outline of the incentives to date. I don't know if Tracy, if there's anything?
Yeah. Sean, I also have Shaker. I'm sorry, the Van Aken Phase One. It was a full non-school TIF plus 75% of the school share and $6 million from the city of Shaker Heights towards infrastructure and site work as well as port savings and low-interest loan from the county. So we're talking a substantial amount, similar to what Cleveland Heights has done.
So Director Lineiger, I appreciate this chart. If you don't mind adding Ms. Nichols' comments just now to this same chart and thank you to Councilman Baker for asking for it in the first place. This comparison's really helpful.
I'll get that added.
And if I can just add that Cleveland Heights issued debt, which is very, you know, in this current market, the only way they felt to get this project done was that they needed to issue debt. That is, obviously, that's a big commitment for a community to take away from their debt ceiling by putting it towards a private enterprise. We don't see that very often. So I just wanted to call that to your attention, that that, it's one thing to issue, to have a TIF, but they also financed it, so.
From my perspective, it's worth pointing out, and this is something I've talked about in the past. You know, the schools, you know, the schools, it's listed as TBD, of course, here. This is a site that has not generated property tax revenue in over 100 years or more, if ever. So it's just worth pointing out if that becomes a point of discussion in this. Any, any additional comments from my colleagues?
Just a quick one.
Please.
I'm assuming we're going to get a copy of this and is this going on the website also or?
Yeah, so I've, I spoke with Council, Council Clerk Bach this afternoon and I'll make sure I get what we've shared this evening compiled and then out to everybody. And then, yes, we've been, we've been sharing all of our information up on the, on the project website.
Ms. Chair?
Please.
And thank you, Director Lineiger, and to the mayor's administration and everyone for putting this together. I think it contextualizes the project and gives the public good information to think about making sure we're kind of aligning with our peer communities. And I likely will have more questions the longer I have to dig into this. But this is a question that they're kind of together. The city funds, you may have mentioned at the 1.5 million. Curious as to what that is, assuming it's bringing it to level grade? Second question, so thank you.
For Roundstone.
Is, oh, it's for Roundstone. That's the incentives for them, okay. Second question is, what, what's left in the hospital fund?
A little over eight right now. I can, we can give you the dollar figure as a follow-up, but it's around eight million.
Okay. And is, is the, is it the intention that the site grading will come out of that fund? Or is that to be determined?
Yeah, that was approved as part of the budget last year, that the site grading will come out of the hospital fund.
So it's, then it will be six and a half?
Concept, yeah.
Okay.
Roughly.
Thank you. And like, once again, thank you. This is excellent information and I look forward to digging into it.
Any other council comments before we move on to public comment? You have an itchy trigger finger there.
Yeah, it's, it's the property tax thing. And it's, it's an interesting, you know, kind of nuance where the site hasn't produced property taxes for a long time. But every dollar of property tax that. but every dollar of property tax that site produces is one less that people who own property in Lakewood pay based on the, the mill it to the school gets. So it's, it's a little bit nuanced where it's spread across the rest of our community, not just, you know, that site, but small point.
Fair point. My only other rather random question is, why, why enshrine in the term sheet the, the infeasibility of the hotel market in Lakewood? Because it, layman talking here, it just seems to me like a hotel could work in Lakewood, especially for lack of, well, I won't say total lack of options, but you know what I mean.
So we enshrine that purposely, knowing that there are going to be a lot of questions about why isn't there a hotel? I think Brent's walked you through why there isn't a hotel being proposed. We also want to make sure that it's clear that if, for whatever reason, there's an opportunity to include a hotel and it's feasible, then nothing that we put together precludes that from happening at some point in the future. So it was, is to, one, to inform and educate, but then also to leave a, I guess, leave a pin behind that. Look, the market may change. It may change while we're, we're in this process. I don't think that's probably going to be the case, but long-term, there may be transition in a building. Perhaps something happens with the office user at some point in the future and that that space becomes available. Let's hope not, but if it does, then a hotel use could potentially be a reuse of that space if it's not another office user or it doesn't convert to a residential or something else. And I'm trying to think about this, we talk about sustainability, we think about green infrastructure, but sustainability is also and resiliency of the project. We also want to make sure we have a resilient project that can adapt over time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. One more.
I just wanted to comment on that and just say that we are seeing no hotel development right now in project management consultants. We work with major projects across the state of Ohio. And one of the most difficult factors for anyone contemplating it is that banks do not want to do any hotels. So you can't get the financing. So that is a factor as well, is that banks look at hotels as being high-risk and at this particular point in the market. And so it is nearly impossible in this market to go and ask a bank for financing for it. So I wanted to make sure that the council was also aware of that factor as, as part of the issue. We're also not seeing a lot of office either, as other spaces are being absorbed and people are working less in offices, so, just so that you're aware.
Yeah, it's a good discussion. So a couple of things. First, this is a beginning. There's, I've got a million questions. We don't have time to go in. Some of it is just my due diligence, so I've been asking clarifying questions, so I deepen my understanding of kind of where we are at the beginning of the conversation. Over time, I think we're going to keep, keep digging into the details, incorporate some input from the public, and see what we can do. So I'm hoping we can spend time, additional time offline, and then report back in the, in the spirit of the public transparency to, to the public at various meetings. I'm talking about myself, you know, what I find and so forth, so that'd be helpful. You know, there's, there's going to be details like, what's the obligation to invest in the, in the, the public access, the public square component if there's a TIF, if there's meaningful public financing? You know, we'd want to, we want to detail some thoughtful under, understandings there, some obligations there. You know, Tracy, it's a good point that today, in this market, and even for some time, a hotel's tough. Is that for all time? Well, it's probably for five, 10 years, but it's possible it could change. So in my ideal world, we'd love to have the best of both worlds, where we get a project done under today's realities, but we build in modularity to grow if the market opens up and allows for expansion in the future. And I know the answer's going to be that adds cost, but that, to me, would be an example of a cost very worth considering, so that we're not only limiting ourselves by today's constraints, but we're also keeping the door open for growth in the future. Because as Councilman Baker said, you know, it's a fair point that we haven't had property tax collections on the site for some time, but we do hope for it to be an engine. And if we did the side-by-side between the anticipated income tax, it doesn't compare to, not yet anyway, not in our near-term projections, to the amount of income tax we had when the hospital was running full-tilt. And the hope originally, and I, I grant you, there's a thing called a pandemic that's happened since originally, was to replace much or all of what we painfully lost, okay? So we're looking for strategies to try to make the community financially whole. You can certainly get my support for thoughtful investments to make the project go, but if we're doing that, let's, let's say for the sake of argument, we're, we're going to end up there, I'm going to start to, to want to negotiate up the quality on features like the public square and the, the finish and the layout and the access, and be ambitious about places like Curtis Block, even though I heard you loud and clear on the, on the challenge of those financials, et cetera. So more to come on that. I appreciate the, you know, the thoughtful beginning that we're off to today. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, unless there's any other comments from my colleagues or members of the administration or Casto, let's turn it over to public comment, where we have two fine, upstanding Ward Three residents signed up for public comment. First of which is Karen Wagner.
And Mr. Chair, if I, we've obviously lost, we've lost the projectors because it's just so hot in here, so I apologize, I can't share anything else at this point.
I know. We're not trying to sweat you all out, there, there's clearly...
I'm texting, I'm texting facilities to try and get some air moving in here, too.
Right, right, right. So name and address for the record, please.
I just wanted to say I really like how right-sized this feels for Lakewood, not only for the neighborhood, but for Lakewood in general. So I wanted to affirm that. And I'm actually going to save my, I'm, I'm like thinking of a whole set of questions, but I'm going to reserve that and let those kind of percolate a little bit, which totally dates me percolating. But I will get back to you on that, but I like what I'm seeing so far. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I know that the administration is planning, and we, there will be a robust, you know, public input process, both through all of these community, the whole meetings that we're holding, planning commission, architectural board of review, and possibly other meetings contemplated in addition to that. We don't want to lose the, the public's input in this as we had with the previous developer that I think was, was some very good, very good conversation. All right, next, we have Ashley Berger.
Hi, Ashley Berger, 1520 Marlowe Avenue, Mayor George, guests, counsel. One question, or, you know, as I kind of learn more about the development process, you know, we've talked about how things have changed with the pandemic, people working from home, office space, whatnot. Have, I'm curious if we've started to look back at backfilling Roundstone where they currently are and how that would impact, you know, the deal and the total numbers and what that means for the city. Thanks.
Sean, if you want to, I know we've talked about it anyway, so...
Yeah, so we, we haven't, I wouldn't say we've had specific conversations, we've had, we've had discussions about it just in general. Roundstone has a number of people they do business with that they, they believe may have a market for that building, but certainly as we get closer to that, then yes, it's one thing about that space, it's an incredibly attractive space, it's very unique, and it's very well done. I, I think we'll, it's well positioned to, to find a, a new occupant for that when, when Roundstone moves over to this, this facility.
Would we call it Class A?
I'm sorry.
I'd call it Class A, wouldn't you? Yes? Yes?
We'll call it...
If that isn't a leading question.
The real, the real estate world might disagree, but it's, it's, it's very well done.
We, we have, I know the market study said what it said with for office, but, but if you differentiate A from the rest of Lakewood, we don't have, I don't think we have 50,000 square feet of vacant Class A, do we, in Lakewood?
No, we don't, but we also don't have a man, a demand for 50,000 square feet of Class A but for Roundstone.
Well, either way, that, that is a unique space that they would be potentially vacating that would be more sought after than anything else in Lakewood, certainly. Any other comments from my colleagues before I pour this water on myself? The administration, anything? All right, well, I really appreciate everybody's approach to this evening. I look forward to discussing other topics next week. We are going to start, I believe, Clerk Bach at 6:00 instead of 6:30, as to allow for an hour and a half for, for that meeting. And Sean, anything else?
There was a, I don't remember if Councilman Litton, it was you, or if it was Council President O'Malley suggested that council members send us your questions.
Please, yeah.
If you could do that, it also helps us schedule our consultants. Tracy's, well, we think her, her number one client, she does have other clients. And so I don't want to take up her next three, couple of Mondays if we don't need her. So if, if you have anything else, let me know, I can always work that through, and if she's available, we'll certainly have her. But I also don't want to just have her sitting here for a couple hours, especially when it's 85 degrees in here, when it's not needed. So please give us those questions, it will help us, and we'll, we'll put a written response together, too.
Yeah, I do encourage my colleagues and anyone from the public as well, if you have questions, send them our way, send them the administration's way, and it just makes it easier to... Seeing no for the business, we are adjourned. Thank you.